Amen to you, God, and to the faithful, liberated, and just as far.
May we stay standing. Heavenly Father, you did it again. You woke us up this morning. You brought us here to another meeting. And, Lord, we ask that you take us home safely to our families this afternoon. Lord, we thank you for allowing us all to assemble to discuss our community and to continue to make our community one of the best communities in the state of South Carolina. Lord, we thank you for all of the citizens that came. We thank you for these council members that are here today. These and all other things, asking your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Okay. Moving along to approval of the minutes for April the 17th of 2023. Any more to that?
Approved the minutes for April the 17th, 2023.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Hear no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes of April the 17th, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unites vote. Okay, under citizens' comments, we got seven people signed up, so we're just gonna go down the list. They had a few pros and a few cons on this, but we're just gonna take it as they signed up in order there. So, we get, ask Mr. Trey Karski.
Hi, I'm Troy Karski. I spoke to you guys last month, 8025 Arrowage Boulevard, Charlotte, North Carolina. I represent D.R. Horton. I'm gonna keep it a little briefer than last time. You know, we have, we have what we believe is a great site for a PD. You know, we are surrounding the school. It's gonna be a walkable community with the school. You know, our, our hope is, you know, I, we don't think buses will be provided to this community. We're gonna be walking to, to the high school and to the elementary school. That's, that's kind of the recap of, of last month and why we think that. But a couple of other things I just want to bring up. You know, we're, we're gonna go and make these private roads, HOA-maintained roads. I know that was a big worry for everyone about how, how you guys are gonna maintain those, but we'll make it the HOA's responsibility to maintain the roads. You know, we're, we're providing a lot of road improvements out here. The, we're adding a lane down Lewisville High School Road to help, help some alleviate a lot of that traffic for the, for the elementary school and for the high school. We're adding multiple lights, one at the middle school, one at the high school, adding left turn lanes into our site, right turn lanes out of our site. You know, so I think, I think some of these are some nice benefits for us to have. One other thing we wanted to, to offer as well and was Sloan Road right now, we'll probably see an increase in traffic from us and from our development. So we see that. So one of the things we want to provide is, is we want to also repave Sloan Road for you. That'll help, help maintain, maintain that road and help maintain really the, the community feel, because we really want to be a part of this community and we want to make sure that we're not negatively impacting this community. We think we're a great spot right off, right off Route 9. So we think, you know, traffic-wise, road-wise, we're gonna do everything we possibly can to, to make this, you know, the, the best community we can possibly make it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Benji Layman?
Hey, I'm Benji Layman. I'm with the Isaacs Group. I'm at 8720 Red Oak Boulevard in Charlotte. I'm with the Isaacs Group. We're the civil engineer for DRB. And you should have a PowerPoint with, same as last meeting, but I'm gonna go ahead and skip over to some of the notable items. The, the plan itself hasn't changed, but I did want to provide some updates on a couple of items, one being the open space. We have lift, listed as 40 acres. We actually, I kind of went back and fine-tuned the numbers a little bit. We're at 60 acres of open space, which is 33% of the site. We're still protecting our existing creeks and the two ponds that are out there. Still have the four spaces per lot plus pocket parks throughout the community. Another item to update is our perimeter buffer. The PD requirements 50-foot from adjacent properties, we are providing at minimum 60 feet. Again, we have already acquired sewer capacity and just want to point out throughout the subdivision, we'll have sidewalks on both sides of the street as well as a trail system throughout the project. Quickly, I wanted to go through a couple of items that came up from the last meeting as far as concerns from you guys and from the, from the community. I'll try to go through these fairly quick, but regarding the church, we are, we are, are set up for a community meeting next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, so we'll discuss in more detail a couple of items. But did want to point out, our, our rezoning limit's actually 300 feet from that property line. So I know there was some concern about drainage and buffering, so we, we are minimum 300 feet from the church. In the way the grades work, stormwater's actually gonna be draining from the church onto our site. So there were some concerns about the cemetery and infiltration. We'll actually be directing away from the church. The, the big concern I know is the roads, so wanted to go through that quickly. We do have an approved traffic study, right turn lanes into the site. We, we do have two road improvements down at Highway 9, a left turn lane onto Highway 9 and a right turn lane off of Highway 9. We'll also be upgrading gas and farm, or making sure it meets the SCDOT cross-section, which means we will be doing work in the shoulder, flattening that out and providing an itch line. Also wanted to hit on the natural area, again, 60 acres. We'll have 35-foot undisturbed buffers off the creek and again, those larger perimeter buffers of at least 60 feet. And that was it. If you have any questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Moving on to, is that Doug Alice? Alice?
Alice.
Alice, okay, yes.
Good evening, Council. My name's Doug Alice. I represent DRB Group, 12957 Blakemore Avenue in Huntersville, North Carolina. Couple of things that I wanted to touch on regarding DRB Group and try not to be redundant from our last meeting. Some of the various counties that we build in right now are Mecklenburg County, Gaston County, York County, Union County, as well as Catawba County. On the, on the last page of your printout, we have our elevations, which are shown here a little bit larger. So we are, we are proposing to build with cemented siding, hardy plank, and various elevations with stone and brick accents. Our finished first floor is gonna be 12 inches above the street, so you have that appearance and safety with the houses a little bit higher than the public sidewalk. We do have architectural shingles that we're proposing. Our soffits overhangs will be six inches on all sides, decorative garage doors, and garage is a minimum of 25 feet from the public sidewalk, so you can park a car in the driveway and have safe access behind the car on the sidewalk. You don't have to walk out into the street to get around the car. And then our square footage ranges are gonna be from 1,400 to 2,300. And what you see on the anticipated price range there, that's a base price. That's not a out-the-door sales price. Most likely, you're gonna be out-the-door 360 to just over 400, most likely with options. And one thing that I want to point out also with regards to the product itself, our houses are 40 feet wide and our lots are proposed to be 60 feet wide and 70 feet wide, which I think are actually 61 and 71 feet wide. So what you'll, the distance that you'll have from wall to wall on a house is gonna be 20 to 30 feet, depending on the lots and the, and the lot size of the adjacent lot. So, so there's been reference in council workshops of a couple of other neighborhoods, ones on, up on 9, on 901. These, as a visual site reference, this is probably two to three times the distance between houses, if that helps with a visual reference. One of the other concerns that was brought up at the last council meeting was no, no contact with Richburg Council. So the Richburg Planning Department, there, there was been a voicemail left with them and I spoke to Chief Melton today and he gave me Mayor Harris, Mayor Harris's information. I did speak to Mayor Harris this afternoon to invite the mayor and council to our community meeting. Since we are Richburg, but they don't have say, we wanted to give them an opportunity to give input on our subdivision, give us comments, questions, concerns. And I did stop by to reiterate what Benji mentioned on the cemetery and the drainage. I stopped by today to, to get a visual. Thank you.
You want to leave him there? Might as well take it.
Yeah. All right, moving on, Mr. Joe Ligon.
Joe Ligon, Knox Station Road, Chester, South Carolina. First of all, I'd like to say, when I've spoken in the past, if I have ever personally offended anyone, I apologize. That has never been my intention and, and I never, ever meant to do that. I know you're all very hard-working conscientious people. I am, however, very passionately against these, these proposals and I'm absolutely convinced that Chester County is taking the wrong fork in the road and going the wrong way with these things. I know some of you think that I am probably naive and some idealist who has no clue what really goes on, but I have traveled more in rural communities and small towns, farms and, and big cities than probably anybody in this room, and I have seen it both ways. I can tell you that before they ever break ground, you're gonna have another proposal in your inbox and then another one and then another one and then another one, 'cause once the rezoning blood is in the water, it's in the water. And that's the way that's gonna be. Rural counties tend to do this. They get an industry or two and they're so thrilled and they call in the governor and they shake hands and they give them no taxes till Armageddon time, and that's what they do. And, and then they get jobs and then 80% of the jobs are filled by people not in the county, 'cause that's just the way it goes. Then what do we do? Then the residential guys swoop in and say, "We're gonna fix that for you." And they bulldoze down 300 acres of pine trees to the dirt and they build house, 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 just like these guys are doing, and they pack it in and then you get thousands of more people and then you gotta have more industry and you gotta have more of this and then you get the strip malls and then you get the strip joints and then it all comes in like that and then, then the people who have lived here all along say, "Stop. We just thought you were gonna build some houses down by the interstate. What happened?" And it is, you cannot take it back. You cannot take it back then. It is gone. The problem is, we confuse population with progress. Progress should be the gradual growth in the quality of life for the people who live here now. Mr. Aggie said, "What are we gonna, how much money are the schools spending now?" That's the question. Adding 500 students is not gonna fix it, you know? And far as, far as these guys are concerned, D.R. Horton made $5.9 billion. And they say they can't afford to build neighborhoods with trees and a little bit of space. They don't, they just can't do it. They can't afford it. Well, I guess I am naive. I guess I am an idealist. If there's a way to do something, there's another way to do it. And we need another way. Another way. I got two seconds, Johnny. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Roxanne James?
Thank you, Chairman Branham. My name is Roxanne James. I live at 3,007 Steel Village Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina, which is in Chester County. And I'm here today to voice concerns from my church, Pleasant Grove United Methodist Church, located at the intersection of Gaston Farm Road and Lyle Road. And the best thing I've heard today was that the Horton community is gonna put in two red lights. Wow, I am impressed. I would like to have a red light in front of GT Tire. I've told you that for years. Need a red light in front of GT Tire, but I'm going off script, excuse me. My church has met and we've talked about our concerns. As a gentleman before me said, we have a concern about water drainage. Our cemetery is on the property line with the Hicklin property. During construction, members of our church have seen this happen in Fort Mill. They're doing construction and they haven't got the water drainage right and it comes into the cemetery instead of going where it needs to go. So we're not only concerned about water drainage after the project's built, we're concerned about water drainage during construction. And we do want to protect our cemetery. Number two on our list is we want the development fees or impact fees or whatever county council has decided to do to be in place before we get new houses in our community. I don't know that that's possible. I know you had a workshop last week, but I'm really hoping that you guys are gonna help protect our fire, EMS, and deputies with a little bit of assistance when these houses are built to be able to do what they need to do to keep our new neighbors, if we get them, our new neighbors protected along with the old neighbors. Number three, we would like a traffic light in front of GT Tire and at the intersection of Gaston Farm and Lyle Road. It doesn't have to be, you know, whatever DOT thinks. That'll be great. We appreciate what you do. We know you've put a lot of time and interest and thank you for having your workshop last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Moving on to Ms. Lori Fowler?
Good evening. Lori Fowler, 2094 Mellon Road, Chester. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. Five reasons to live in the Gaston Farm Road area. Peaceful, quiet, rural country life. Ability to walk, ride a bicycle on a country road, live on the family's homestead. Privacy, less stress, abundant space, closeness to nature. Ability to raise chickens, horses, cattle, sheep, and goats on our land. Reasons not to live in Chester County. Chester County Schools ranked number 37 out of 46 counties in South Carolina. Academics are below average. Preparing for success is unsatisfactory. Graduation rate is below average. Chester County has a crime rate of 47 per 1,000 residents. Nationwide average is 23, obviously twice the national average. Lack of restaurants, shopping, stores. Great Falls has one new business since the whitewater opening and this has been known for years. Chester City has a new restaurant, coffee shop, and big lots. But those that us, that live out in the country don't mind trying, you know, for your stores. Tax rate in Chester County is higher than the state average. By continuously allowing developers to pay minimal fees, providing a, providing a fee in lieu of taxes, our taxes will continue to increase to pay for infrastructure for planned developments and needed projects. It's expensive to provide schools, sewers, roads, EMS. House taxes do not pay the burden of these taxes. Businesses do. The proposed property backs up to the Crenshaw Holdings, a part of Crenshaw Parkway. Logically, a piece of land could be used to access, to access the Parkway for business. Reasons to vote against the Gaston Farm Road development. There are over five developments approved on 901 alone. Only Knights Bridge has some houses built and sold. Wait, there is no need for this PD at this time as over 5,000 homes have been approved. There is also over 200 real estate listings for sale. There is no strategic plan for any planned developments and the gateway plan has been ignored. Council has no business approving planned developments. Infrastructure, schools, fire, and law enforcement need to be fully utilized and staffed. As a side note, Louisville schools are overcrowded as children have been relocated. Residents are against this location and the council is to represent us. Chester City Limits need housing. Money has the schools, infrastructure, so relocate there or to Great Falls or Lowry's. We must maintain forest, agricultural land. Look at 901. They have bulldozed down all the trees and ravaged the land. Noise congestion and traffic. With traffic issues increasing on I-77 and Route 9, the Richburg and Edgemore areas with alarmingly deadly consequences, overcrowding of rural areas would cause the loss of rural country culture forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Please. No outbursts, please. Okay, Mr. Tom Miller?
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name's Tom Miller. I live at 1682 Pleasant Grove Road here in Chester, South Carolina. I'm the owner of the Gaston Farm property formerly owned by the Hicklin family. Wanted to give the council and the community a little backstory on why we're here. When we first purchased the property, we were interested in because it was zoned ID2 for industrial use. It could accommodate approximately 3 million square feet of industrial buildings. Looking at the site, it needs better access for that type of use. Mention of the Crenshaw Parkway accessibility was the first thing we pursued. Meeting with the property owner, he was absolutely unwilling to negotiate any possible access through easement or purchase or land exchange. Looking at site from three miles up, Gaston Farm Road looked to be the only access point available to us. The site lends itself more to residential application as opposed to industrial use. I contacted Fielding Homes specifically because they were willing to build something better than you see in Chester now. They were willing to commit to not building vinyl housing using hardy board, architectural detail, all of which increased the expenses of their homes 15 to $20,000. That's why I brought Fielding Homes to Chester. I live here too. I don't want to see disposable housing. We have industry coming to Chester. We need housing for them. We want the people to work here, live here, spend money here, support our businesses. Appreciate your consideration of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. Moving right along to ordinances and resolutions and proclamations. First reading of 2023-11, an ordinance to amend Chester County Council rules of procedure for Article 3, Section 2-21 through 2-27. Page 20 on our, we got that. Need a motion on that?
Make a motion that we approve the first reading of 2023-11.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion to second. Need a comment, the discussion?
Yes. I spent most of the afternoon talking to the SOAR district. And you just got through saying you're gonna build 400 houses and that's all the SOAR you have. This project is a long-term project.
Mr. Branham.
Right now, this minute.
This year, we, we, I'm sorry. Need to stick to the ordinance there. We own the ordinance to amend Chester County Council rules of procedure, Article 3, Section 221 through 227. We got the motion and a second on this. Ms. Williams, would you sort of go over that first to explain what that is?
Sure. This, this is not, as council knows, you have parliamentary procedure. This is different. This is your county council rules of procedure, which you're permitted to have under state law. And because we changed form of government in January, a lot of these rules of procedure have to be changed to reflect the administrator form of government, which is not as simple as just scratching out the word supervisor and putting in the word administrator, because the, the duties are different. And so this is just first reading. If you would take some time and, and read through them, there are several sections that we've amended. One is the form of government, but then we also have council chair, county administrator. It's, it's sort of like the job description of, of our, our county administrator. And so again, it's first reading. If you, it's redlined, you'll see the changes. Karen's also graciously provided you with the, the existing rules of procedure under this section, so you can, you, you can have a good comparator. So if, if council has any questions regarding some of these changes, I'm happy to, to answer those.
We should have plenty of time between now and our third reading on this to review this and make suggestions for what we think necessary. Any further comments on the rules and procedures there?
But we, it's two different readings. They're about the same thing, but it's two different.
Yes, sir. We, we have three, we'll have three, two more after this.
No, no, no. I'm saying point, bullet point A.
Oh, oh.
Bullet point B are related. They're just, but they're two different.
They are not. Bullet point A is just your rules of procedure. Bullet point B is a different ordinance. That was the ordinance you passed for development agreements.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay. Any further comments, questions?
Let me ask you one thing in plain language. What does A mean?
What does A mean?
What, what does that mean, change in ordinance? What does it mean?
It means that we go look at the old ordinance and revise it to better suit the situation that we're in.
And that's the administrator is the, what?
You mean, what's, what's his, his role in government? His role is, is, let me get there, Mr. Aggie. I'll tell you in a second. So I'm at Section 2-27, subsection A, the county shall employ an administrator, not a member of the council, who shall be the chief administrative officer of the county government, shall be responsible for the administration of all the departments of the county government, which the council has the authority to control. So obviously that, that does not include elected officials.
So he is gonna be the captain of the ship for everybody?
He is.
For everybody?
He is. He won't be. He is.
Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Is that unanimous? Okay, all right, good. Thank you. Okay, first reading of 2023-12, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-12. Need a motion on that?
I'll move that we approve the first reading of 2023-12, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-12.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Williams, could you clarify that?
Sure.
More in layman's terms?
Yes, sir. So in December of 2021, y'all approved an ordinance that would include the requirements for your execution and contents of any kind of development agreement. During your workshop and, and your last meeting, you discussed having a not-to-exceed fee for development agreements that would be not to exceed the amount of $5,000 for single-family homes and not to exceed 3,000 for the development of townhomes. And so this ordinance sits before you today, amends the ordinance back from December of 2021 to include that as a requirement.
Say that one more time.
Sure. So when we approved an ordinance that would allow us to enter into development agreements, and that was back in December of 2021, when y'all did that, you had certain caveats in that ordinance that you wanted in those development agreements, but there weren't any dollar figures. As of the last workshop and your meeting, y'all discussed a not-to-exceed amount of 5,000 for a single-family home and a not-to-exceed an amount of 3,000 for a townhome.
It seems to me, and I agree with Mr. Gabe, it's just, we talked about $5,000, but I was under the impression we gave Mr. Hess to the obligation to negotiate that fee.
This isn't a negotiation, Mr. Aggie. This is just an amendment to the ordinance. That's all it is.
That ordinance was passed before this council was done.
That's, that's correct.
So is there any language in there? I guess what Mr. Agee is getting at, is there any language in this ordinance, the new ordinance? Well, the amendment that would say that Mr. Hester has the authority to negotiate that fee?
The last whereas says that.
Is that page 30?
Yes.
Okay.
It says ordinance 2021-12 must also be amended in Section 5, which says additional provisions to state that the administrator/chairman shall be authorized to carry out the transactions authorized by the ordinance because prior to that it said supervisor. And so there you go.
Thank you, Ms. Winters.
And that's the administrator is doing that negotiation.
That's in the amendment? Or his design name?
Any further discussion or comments? Hear none? All in favor of approving 2023-12? Raise your right hand, say aye?
Aye.
I'm unanimous. Okay.
Can I say one thing before you?
Sure.
Just want to clarify to those listening that this is a developmental fee and this is what we're going to use in place of a impact fee at the moment.
Yes, sir. Until such time as a.
Just clarifying that for those that are listening.
Yeah, until such time as a comprehensive study, sir.
Until it gets down to the third reading, if there's not any change tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to number six, the administrator's report. Mr. Hester?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to belabor the administrator's report tonight. We have a packed house and we have a full schedule, but I did take a trip to Great Falls last week. Councilman Vaughn gave me a tour of Great Falls. I greatly appreciate it. I got to meet the mayor, several other members of the community down there and got a tour, but it was very enlightening for me. And I urge, I know some of you, some of the other council members have met with me, given me tours, but I urge you, if you haven't got a chance to take me around your districts, feel free to reach out and set up a time that's convenient for you. And I'd love to go and do the same, but I appreciate that. We're obviously in the budget process. We start workshops tomorrow. And that, Mr. Darby and his staff have been working very hard and hopefully tomorrow that we can get that process started and over with pretty soon. Just for information, I know that there's been a lot of question. I think I'm going to address this right now just because there's been a lot of question about a stage that was purchased with the once-ent sales tax. And it was for, it was allocated to kind of some confusion whether the Town of Great Falls or the Flop Eye Fish Festival, but the stage is supposed to be used by other government entities and be free of charge to be used, and that was kind of the conditions that was set forth. And I know there's been some complaints about that, or some questions about that, rather. And so just for council information, we are, we've been researching that. There's, as far as what the original documentation stated, who actually is the owner, is it the Town of Great Falls or is it the Flop Eye Fish Festival? And so, Ms. Winters, we have actually a meeting Wednesday morning to try to kind of iron that out, but we are working on it. I know that I've had a couple of emails on it, just so you know that we are moving forward. The only other thing is, one of the bridges, I think Mr. Darby, our emergency management, Mr. Darby, had sent a notice out, but just for public notice, we will place that on our Facebook, we'll place it on our website. But Little Rocky Creek Bridge, I believe it's called, and it's a replacement going on there. It's on Moffett Creek Road. That's supposed to start May the 10th, expected to take five months to complete. So they do, there is a posted detour. But I have, I'm not, I don't know these roads that well, but I found my own detour that was a lot quicker than 16 miles. So maybe that's just DOT's way of detouring traffic. And then tomorrow, there's a teacher appreciation out at the Gateway Center. That kicks off at 3 o'clock. I'll be attending that as well tomorrow. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hester. All right, moving on to old business. First reading of CCMA 22-17, Fielding Homes LLC CO. I group request 160.33 acres of tax map, 114,000 to dash 00, dash 015, dash 000 on Gaston Farm Road to be rezoned from limited industrial district ID2 to planned development, a district PD. Planning commission voted 5 to 1 to approve. Need a motion on that.
I want to make that motion, first reading of CCMA 22-17.
All right, got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Wilson? Comments and discussion?
Yes. Is this piece, the piece that's located directly behind Pleasant Grove Cemetery? Is this the piece?
Yes.
Could someone from Fielding come up and answer some questions I got? All right, so you've got some members of Pleasant Grove Church that are concerned about the water running into the graveyard. And I took a trip out there with some citizens back in December.
James, Ms. James, is that it?
Yeah, Ms. James. But I took a trip with some other citizens from the community back in December that actually took a look at that cemetery. So one of the biggest things is we want to make sure that we satisfy those citizens at that church. So my question is, I've seen a lot of, and one of the questions she asked was, what do you plan to do during the construction phase to keep that water runoff from running into that cemetery? And then I've also seen developments that have high berms where you can't really see, you can only see kind of like the rooftops of the houses. Is there something, are you planning on construction, constructing something like that so that the church doesn't actually see the housing?
We will. We'll have a meeting with the church next week just to kind of go through some of these concerns. But, so the church is located right here. And it's hard to tell in here, but this is our rezoning boundary, this dark line. So we're not proposing to do anything through here. There's an existing pond. It's vegetated. That's 300 feet right here.
Between that back line, that's the cemetery is probably that little, that little L shape.
That's right. So, and this is our entry here.
Yeah.
So we're 300 feet away. I haven't done a full-blown grading study yet, but I've done kind of a preliminary study. We'll grade about 50 to 75 feet off of this road. So we'll leave about 250 feet, or 200 to 250 feet undisturbed. To answer your question on the berms, we do typically do a berm. We'll do one along Gaston Farm Road. You can't see it here, but we left like a 30-foot minimum gap between the back of the property line and the right-of-way. So we'll have a four-to-six-foot-high berm that's planted to screen from the road. It's for the commuters and for the residents. We would do the same through here, provide a buffer and a berm through there as well. As far as drainage during construction, yeah, we'll be required through the state to provide erosion control. It'll be a three-phase plan, but what we would do is we'd have a diversion. We'd have a berm through here and then a diversion ditch. And everything actually drains this way. Here's the kind of the beginning of a stream. So it actually drains this direction. So we'll have some temporary sediment ponds throughout the site, but we'll be directing all this flow into ponds kind of situated right in here. And then this will be a permanent pond, but also be during construction. Same for this one as well. That's the existing pond that we'll leave in place. But we'll divert runoff from here during construction. We don't want to intermingle the two. So we will divert water away from the church and other adjacent properties. Keep it on site, collect it in our ponds, and then release it back.
And you said the berm is going to be, or you considering it?
We will do a berm.
All right. And when will your grading study be done?
Usually that's not until we are approved, hopefully through council. Once we get to that point, then we're released for full construction documents. And then at that time, we go into a full-blown design.
Do you share that grading study with our building official?
Yes.
Let me come back to what I started to say a while ago. I spent most of the afternoon talking about sewer. Do you have 400 houses that you're going to do?
Correct.
Plan development is how many houses?
400. 400.
That whole tract of property is 400?
So when we initially met with planning, we were asked to only ask to rezone what we could get sewer for. So we are only asking for rezoning of 400 lots because that's all we could get sewer. So this divide here, this dark line, this is what we're requesting to rezone based on the 400 lots of what we have sewer for. It also kind of made a natural, this is the creek. It's set up for a natural rezoning boundary where this could be left as industrial for sun fiber down the road, or, you know, this is looking at a 2030 build-out. So this area would be revisited at that time.
The sewer company, this county has, this county council has absolutely nothing to do with sewer.
Right.
In Lancaster County, I went over Saturday to the university graduation. The Lancaster newspaper had an article. Lancaster County and the city of Chester got $31 million for water and sewer development in Lancaster County. We didn't get a dime. Now, I don't know what the sewer company got. I don't know what the water company got. But 400 houses is all you've got. And until you have the sewer company sitting in here telling these PDs how much sewer they got, because there is very, very limited capacity. Most of Longback there is getting ready to talk about some industrial projects. We giving you permission to build houses for something we have no control of, and that's sewer and water. That makes no sense to me. Now, what we're going to do to you is take $5,000 a house. And what are we going to do with that money? It doesn't go into anything except a little bit of stuff. We can't, we're not giving any money to the city of Chester, who used to supply most of the tax money in this county. I am not going to vote in favor of putting houses on Gaston Farm Road. We had an 11-car pileup on Interstate 77 yesterday. You couldn't get through Richburg. And if you do that, as Ms. Soodal said in here the other week, it just comes off and comes down through there. And this one thing we don't need is any more traffic on those gap farming market roads. Now, we can sit here and play games all day, but it is not worth it. I'd rather put the money someplace else and leave that all industrial because that should be industrial. Because you can come in the Crenshaw Parkway and get all that, and then you've got industry all in there. And I promise you, I couldn't care less about what the people come here and live enough. But for the sake of argument, our school system needs children. Our businesses need people. But we don't need to profit on the backs of the people that are going to have to pay the sewer bill that we all have. And that's not going to do anything except go up because you're not going to be paying but about $60, $50 a month. When you multiply all that out, it just doesn't make sense mathematically.
All right, any further questions? Comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before council goes to vote, you typically have made these motions to approve contingent on a development agreement being completed at a certain sunset period, otherwise there's a reverter. And so I'm not sure I heard that in your motion. Okay, so if you, I'm just pointing it out because in the past, that's what you've done. So if you want to do that, then Mr. Wilson would have to withdraw his second. And who do you have?
I still got some questions on that before we get too far. I get them mixed up. Fielding Homes. Fielding Homes. How many homes you planning on building the first year?
First year? 70 to 80.
Okay, and then how many years before the 400, you think you'll have the 400? I know you, I could do the math and do 70 times to come up with the 400, but what do you think realistically?
For the purpose of the traffic study, the way they looked at it, we were projecting out to 2029, 2030 for a full build-out.
2029?
2029, 2030.
2029, 2030.
Yes.
All right, reason why I asked is because I do think, and I hear you, I do think the sewer district has some plans in the works for some of this, but I don't know when it's going to be done.
They need to be sitting here talking.
Yeah, I don't know exactly when it's going to be done.
They've been trying to get a meeting with this council for years.
I do want to say we have acquired the sewer, but we have actually purchased the sewer for the 400 houses.
Oh, you've purchased the sewer for?
Yeah, so we do currently have the allocation.
Okay.
All right.
70 houses a year, okay.
On that particular motion, I think that, I think that we were looking for a withdrawal of the second and redo that motion to insert.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Development fee on that. Is that correct, Ms. Winters?
Yes, sir. And the sunset, the sunset where the completion has to take, or the the planned development has to be initiated within two years. Now, that's actually in our ordinance, but this council has discussed it being in the development agreement and part of the motion, so.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, Mr. Keegan, would you like to restate that motion and insert those two different clauses about?
What two?
Development fee and the sunset, but within two years it will be started within two years.
Right, it would have to be started within two years. And if it was not, the zoning would revert back.
A revertor clause?
Yes, sir. And then it would also, and it would, yeah. Well, revertor clause, if it's not started within two years. And then also, it would be subject to an acceptable development agreement by this council.
Pardon me for asking this question. You say two years within started, what would that necessarily mean? Start a permit for the first, or is it like, what would dictate the starting point?
Mike, what's that standard been? I think it's, I think Ms. Mosley's right. I think it's permitting, isn't it? Pulling on the first, it's not.
Okay.
Dirk, Dirk out of the ground.
You got to understand that once y'all rezoned, if you approve it or deny it, the next step is they have to come back to the planning department for a sketch plan. Then it goes back to the preliminary plat, which is presented to the planning commission. And then they have a timeline to get to the final plat to be presented and approved by the planning commission. So if you read the ordinance, the ordinance says as long as it's proceeding in that two, within the two-year period, it continues with the current zoning that it was approved for. But if they don't do anything in a two, say if y'all approved it and then they didn't do anything for two years, it reverts back.
As long as they're moving forward with it in some shape and fashion, it's still active.
I want to see stop and go point, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, because they won't pull a permit. They'll stand up here and tell you it'd take them two years or longer to get all the infrastructure and all the design to that point.
So they're not going to pay any money until?
They pull the first permit or however y'all put it in the development agreement. That's on y'all.
Yeah.
$5,000 times 70 is $350,000. And we talked about in the workshop the other night how that money is divided up. Did we not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So X percentage is going to go here, X percentage is going to go there, blah, blah, blah. I don't quite understand how. I don't quite understand how in the world we think that's a lot of money.
Okay, you made that motion again, so we can get this on.
Brian, one more question for fielding. Where exactly is the first set of houses going to be built on this plot of land?
First set of houses. This is our proposed amenity site here.
That's the second entrance.
There's, yes, there's, there's one entrance here.
Okay.
And then there's an entrance here, and this box is our proposed amenity. So, most likely somewhere in this vicinity, it's not decided yet, most likely somewhere in this vicinity would be a model. And then it just depends on how we plat the subdivision. If we plat this section first, we would start here. If we plat a section back here, we would start here. But that's part of the planning and going into the civil.
What dictates, what dictates which one you plat?
After we, after he gets into the hard construction drawings of the site.
I guess is the question, are you getting at what infrastructure is going in with the first? So, generally how we do it, we'll have to put in both entrances, and our sewer's going to be coming from the rest stop. And water's going to be coming from down here. So, we'll end up, this might be the first takedown, but we'll end up putting in a lot of the infrastructure you see throughout the site just because we'll have to for sewer and for water and for our stormwater ponds here and here. So, we'll end up, we'll strategically plat it, but a lot of this infrastructure will already be in place prior to, you know, say twenty, twenty-five, when we might be going for lot two hundred. Actually, most of this will be built out from an infrastructure standpoint.
Okay.
So, they got to come from the sewer district, probably come from the rest area because they want gravity fed instead of having a pump station.
Okay.
So, that reduces their cost by doing it. If they had to put a pump station in, that would be X.
Let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on this, so we can do further discussion.
I'm going to make the motion, if we can make the motion to approve the first reading of CCMA twenty-two dash seventeen with the reverter clause that it will revert back if it does not, if it does not follow as our ordinance describes the appropriate timeline of two years. And also that a acceptable development agreement is approved as well.
I need a second on that.
Second.
Second, get a motion and a second, now we'll open it back up for any further discussion on that motion.
Are all the houses going to be front-loaded? What is the purpose of that?
What's the purpose of the front-load?
What is the purpose of all the houses being front-loaded? Because you can get them closer together by doing a front-load, just doing a side-load?
Not really, I mean, generally, the only time we ever do rear-load is when our houses are actually either townhomes or compact. It does add for more infrastructure because usually you need an alley. So, there is more maintenance, and typically, there's more, there's more issue within the alleyway to serve a rear-load.
I was in Fort Mill the other day, and where the old golf course of high school were, they're six feet apart. They're six feet apart because of front-loading. And if you side-load, then you're probably thirty or forty feet between houses, and that's a little bit more platable than sticking them all together. Now, that, on Mike's, Mike's Trail, Mike's Street, and Fort Mill, if you go up there, that's a disgrace. For the sake of argument, we don't need any of that. And that's what these people are upset about is because they live in a community where there's trees and where there's things, and they're not planted. If you go to Springfield and Fort Mill, you'll see the same thing. And they're half-million dollar homes. Several years ago, they're probably more than that now. So, what we're, we are trying to do is to keep Chester County somewhat livable and not people coming in here and spending the night and going someplace else.
Did you not state that those homes between twenty and thirty foot apart?
They are.
That's what I was thinking. Normally, it's of twelve feet, I believe, some of them, and we thought that was twelve, six feet on each side of the property lot.
That's what I was going to clarify. We're not doing the front-load so that we can jam them in next to each other. We're sixty-foot lot or seventy-foot lot, and the houses are forty feet wide. So, you'll have twenty feet to thirty feet between the houses.
But you wouldn't have that much, you'd have, you'd have to split it in half, wouldn't you?
Well, you have, you have a sixty-foot lot.
You wouldn't get the whole thirty because you got, you got two sides to the house.
From wall to wall of house. So, you have a sixty-foot lot with a forty-foot house, which means you have ten feet on both sides to the property line.
Yeah.
So, six, sixty-foot lot, forty-foot house, ten feet to the property line, here's your property line. The other sixty-foot lot.
You're adding the other property line, the other piece of property.
When I say, I'm saying from wall of house A to wall of house B is going to be twenty to thirty feet, which means your side yards to your property line is ten to fifteen feet. So, it's not going to be, it's not going to be six feet.
We say it every day, all we got to do is drive up past Dr. Giuseppe's at Bojangles', and they're front-loaded houses. Supposedly two cars in the garage, but they use the garage as storage, and you got four cars out in the road. And right now, it's not that many houses. They went in there the other day in a fire truck and almost couldn't get in there to somebody that had a heart attack. So, here again, we're just going to stack up these things, and nobody's thinking about what the emergency services and those types of things got to do to get in there. I don't know what your place is going to look like, but I know what happened the other day down at Nice Bridge.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, how wide are the roads in the neighborhood?
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot right-of-way.
And how, how, how wide?
It's a fifty-foot right-of-way.
To my ignorance, how, what's the width of typical road?
I have to double-check the standard, but generally, it's between twenty-four and twenty-six feet wide, two-lane, obviously. And then planting strip and sidewalk on each side within the right-of-way. So, we'll be pavement-wise, twenty-four to twenty-six feet, which generally for fire access, it's twenty feet minimum.
If you, if you park a car on the right-of-way or in the right-of-way out in front of the house, and the guy next door parks that in there, and you're trying to get a fire truck, emergency vehicle in there, you just got a problem.
I agree with that. So, our plan here is, because that, we hear that as a complaint in a lot of neighborhoods. What we'll do, and so that's the reason for our twenty-five-foot front setback, is to have multiple car parking between the garage and the driveway, not shown on this plan. We left a lot of opportunity throughout, as we call common open space, like in here, 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 just all mixed in. We're going to have pocket parking for visitors. And then I would imagine in the covenants, it'll be stated there shouldn't be on-street parking, and that would be handled by the HOA. But we will be providing visitor parking opportunities throughout the development.
Yeah, what they have at Springfield, they have a visitor parking lot, you have to park your car and then walk to the house. And it's not necessarily right across the street. So, you have these parking spots that you have to park in. The homeowner can't help but two cars, they can't park in the road in Springfield. They have to park an extra car in the parking lot.
And how wide you say that this is going to be between sidewalk and sidewalk?
It'll be a twenty-four to twenty-six foot wide road, and I have to attract the cross-section, but the planting strip usually is between six and eight feet. But, so, we do have twenty-six feet of pavement, it's a four-foot planting strip and five-foot sidewalk on both sides.
And none of those plans have been turned in to the, to the planning department yet? You haven't turned anything?
We wouldn't submit anything until?
So, how hard would it be to make, because I heard you say that that is a concern in neighborhoods, that it's too tight. So, how hard would it be to make those roads a little bit wider?
We can look at doing that, for sure. Generally, if we did that, it'd probably bump it up to probably thirty foot from pay.
I mean, I'm just the kind of person that thinks that before you do something, try to get it, while you got time, try to get it as right as you can get it.
Sure.
I have one more thing I'd like to bring up, something I want to reiterate, is concerns about the roads fifteen, twenty years from now. I really like the plan that HOA takes responsibility of the roads in the future, not the county. We have a lot of developments going in, and surrounding counties do not take roads into their system. I think that would be a good subject for you guys to talk about when you sit down with Mr. Hester. I hope you will discuss that and see if there's a different alternative we could look at.
Well, Mike, you have a good point, though. If you go to Church Street in Great Falls, and there's a fire down there, trying to get a fire truck down there is virtually impossible. And that's because the plan of development that those mill villages were so narrow, you couldn't do it. And, you know, when they start nailing nails, it's going to be too late.
Is that a possibility of trying to get it a little bit wider?
I mean, we could definitely look at that, for sure.
I mean, his thing, we, we, it's not wrong with us, if we accept this, it's not wrong with us being a little bit different, us being more attractive. Our neighborhoods and developments looking a little different, our neighborhood is having a wider road. If we can come to that agreement now, I think everybody wins.
Yep, and what we can do too is, I can add before the second reading, I can kind of go through and add where we're suggesting some of the visitor parking, pocket parking locations, and kind of quantify that number. And maybe where we're lacking in an area where you do have to walk, we can look at, you know, more on-street parking situation. We can come back with something a little more detailed on the parking.
Well, there's, Ms. Barber back there, she's a member of town council in Richburg. And there's a gentleman that came to Richburg, bought a half-acre lot, built his racecar shop. He parks his mobile home there, he parks his trucks there to haul his racecars in because he couldn't have those in the homeowners association on Pleasant Road and Fort Mill. And that's what you're doing here, you're going to come in and somebody's going to have all that stuff, and where are they going to put it? Are you going to exclude them from being able to live there? Or they got to park, or whatever the case may be. Are you having a homeowners association that dictates that?
We will, so that'll be outlined and called out in the covenants and restrictions, which all buyers will get before they sign a contract. So, if they, if they have that stuff, and they choose to buy there, then they're choosing to keep it in a storage facility off-site somewhere else that's not in the neighborhood.
So, I would like to kind of share my input on this. Y'all have a right to hear what I have to say, whether you agree with me or not. You know, one of my goals is to be consistent in my votes, and I've said this before, and so I repeat myself here, but I'm going to do it. You know, we as a council have voted for taxes centers to attract industry here. We did it just, just a month ago or so. And doing that, I knew that would bring change, and this is part of that change. I've also voted for other PDs, and those PDs, they also did have development agreements attached to them. It was said today that, I believe it was, that that wasn't the case, but they did have fees attached to them. We had a really good workshop last week, and really got some good information, and I feel very comfortable with the plan of up to five thousand dollars per home for those fees. It's not a lot of money, but it's a, it's a good start. You know, I just have always kind of come from it, from property rights as well. You know, I'm a believer in, I want to own the land I own and be able to use it the way I want to use it. And that kind of works both ways. That means I have to worry about my side of the fence and not the other side of the fence quite so much. That means my neighbor has a right to sell their land. They might, they might have a junkyard, they might have, might have a plan development there. I understand that, and that's kind of, just kind of the way I see things, you know, property rights, they, if you really want to own your own land, that means that you really can't control your neighbor's property. It doesn't mean that we can't do this the right way. And one thing that kind of frustrates me is that I hear a lot of feedback, and it's just a hard no. And what would really work a lot better for me is if I heard ideas for how to make it better. One of the things in our zoning ordinances that we added last year is that we do require a buffer in terms of visual buffer. I believe it's a fifty percent visual buffer in the summertime. Am I right about that, Mr. Levis, or is it fifty percent? That's a meaningful change that can make a real difference. And so, that's something that, that's something that we did as council last year that I thought was a step in the right direction. But sometimes it feels like those ideas like that really don't carry any water, but, but they should. We want to make sure we do it as well as we can do it. Mr. Guy, I like your comments about, hey, if there's something we can do to space it out, or this or that, it makes a lot of sense to me. You know, we, it was said earlier tonight, the large industries don't pay taxes, that's not the case, they pay a lot of taxes. And I'm all about negotiating a good deal when it comes to fee and lieu agreements. But the fact of the matter is, every industry in Chester County pays taxes, lots of property taxes. I tend to always, I'm going to believe that the free market has a lot better handle on these things than a government body does. And for that reason, if we can let the free market work and decide a lot of the details of these developments, I feel like that's a better outcome. That doesn't mean we can't have a hand in it, and I feel like with our development agreement fee, development agreement, and Mr. Hester will be working on with the developers, we have a hand in that. And so, we need to, we need to make sure we really think through what we're saying and what we're doing, and try to get the best outcome possible. You know, last thing I'll say is we, this council, through our zoning book and our land use, we have a game, a game plan together. This is how PDs would work in Chester County. And, you know, we developed this game plan, we normally don't hear much feedback. We've had text amendments, and we never have any public comment about the text amendments that we do. It seems like everybody's okay with it until someone actually shows up, reads our game plan, and says, okay, let me proceed with the development. And then people say, wait, wait, this isn't, you know, the houses are too dense or too this. You know, if we really don't want PDs in Chester County, then let's tackle that head-on and say, hey, we're going to scratch it out of our ordinance altogether. I think that would be a big mistake, I think it would have unintended consequences if we did that. But, but just trying to say, hey, to the developers, this is, this is how you get approved in Chester County, but not really. It doesn't, it doesn't really make sense to me, I might not be making sense on that point. But we have said, this is, this is how plan developments work in Chester County, and yet, when they come to us, they're following our guide, and then we, then we turn them down just because it's not a good sign for the future of Chester County in terms of economic growth. And I think it's important to note too, that these developments are not going to happen all at once. The market will control this. If too many are coming too fast, the developers will put the brakes on it because they'll have to. And so, I'm comfortable with the plan before us. This is first reading, there's two more readings, there's plenty of opportunities to make it better, and I appreciate y'all being here. I trust Mr. Hester will really dig into this development agreement, make it the best it can be. Mr. Levis, what did you have?
I just wanted to touch on what you was talking about, is the moratorium that the county council adopted on April two thousand twenty-two. So, John, basically, in that moratorium, the residential home can be no less than ten foot from the sideline. Must be fifty foot from any adjacent property that's not part of the subdivision. It's required to have parking spaces for three cars, and the garage only counts as one, so the outside area has to require two. The first thirty feet from the existing roadway has to be an open space natural buffer fifty percent vegetation.
Well, is that what he's proposing?
That's what the guidelines, he's going to have to require once he makes that submitted to the building and planning and zoning department.
I'll just say this real quick as well, it's not, I like the development, I like the way it's set up, it's a good setting. The, and we, I know where Cory's going with the, you know, making adjustments. But I will say this, before I get there, the thing that I'm concerned about is the actual traffic that they have no control over or we have any control over. You're adding that many cars to those side roads. That's what's concerning to me, and I know we had the wreck on seventy-seven yesterday, as well as how many we've had over the last couple of months, and it's always impeded that road, and it's, it's dangerous to a point at times, or it's, I know it's inconvenient, you can't help inconvenience at times. But that's the thing that kind of, I, I mean, you can't just move the land where you want it to, but it just worries me that it's so far away from a four-lane intersection. from a four-lane intersect, intersection, or a segway highway that can handle that type of traffic. That's the only thing that kind of concerns me. You know, that's my big pause with it. And it's nothing that any one of us has any control over.
Well, with the meeting that we had with South Carolina Department of Transportation, me and Mr. Hester, David Gamble said that road was reconstructed to handle that traffic in 2015. And there was no, as far as the width and everything, wasn't a concern for that traffic. And that's in the notes that was provided to Mr. Hester from David Gamble.
Right. I'll have to marinate on that for a little while, but that's my, my, that's my big red light right now.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any more discussion before we move on to a vote? All right, is, do we understand what the vote is? I know it's been a while since the motion was made. So, uh, would you like to repeat that one more time, Mr.?
Sure, I'd be glad to. So the motion is to approve the first reading of CCMA 22-17. That's the recommendation of the planning commission to approve it with the reverter clause, that it must take place as our ordinance describes within two years, meaningful, meaningful progress, and that a development agreement satisfactory is in place as well.
Right. Mr. Kiyah, you say?
I'd like to.
All right. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Well, that's one, little hold'em again. One, two, three, four, five. Five, four, all opposed? Two opposed. Okay, it passes five to two. Okay, uh, moving on to B. First reading of CCMA 22-18, Fielding Homes LLC CEO Isaac Group requests 19.27 acres of tax map 114-00-00-059-000 on Gaston Farm Road to be rezoned from Limited Industrial District ID2 to Plan Development District PD. Planning Commission voted five to one to approve.
I will, I will, a motion that we approve the first reading of CCMA 22-18. That includes a reverter clause and an acceptable development agreement.
Need a second?
Second.
You forgot. Motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? Two opposed. All right, it passes five to two. Okay, moving on to C. First reading of CCMA 22-19, D.R. Horton Incorporated requests map number 135-00-00-019-000 on Laxter Highway to be rezoned from Industrial, Limited Industrial District ID2 to Plan Development District PD. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. Need a motion?
I make a motion to oppose the planning commission's decision and also add to it a requirement of reverter clause and also the condition that there has to be a negotiated developer's agreement that's acceptable to council.
Okay, got a motion and a second on this?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kiyah. Any discussion?
Yes, is this directly off Highway nine?
Yeah.
This is on Highway nine?
Just about that school.
By the school.
Okay. That's the?
That they going east towards Sloan.
Yeah.
You don't have a?
I don't have a large plan. I just have a small plan. But I could get you guys a large plan next time, if that helps.
Okay. I think I saw that at the Richburg Fire Department. I think they showed me that one at the fire department. Okay. All right, I think, okay. That's the one directly past the school?
Yeah, down the school road between Los one.
Yeah, I, I've seen it.
The medical center, I think.
Yeah, and then on down to Sloan.
Yeah, I saw it. I saw the plan. All right, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Mr. Hester, have you gotten any numbers from Ford?
I don't have from D.R. Horton yet. Uh, Fielding Homes has reached out, correct? You sent an email with a proposal, but I don't have anything from D.R. Horton. But I, we have not responded to them yet. We were waiting to see where tonight went.
Any further discussion or comments?
The only thing I will say, there's not anybody in here tonight that said anything against D.R. Horton.
That's been the way it's been since then. It is one place that makes sense for this county to grow. They can walk to school. It's very similar to what we have in Fort Mill up there. And it's just, uh, makes sense. I'm not really in favor of front-loading, but that's what it is. But here again, the school system is gonna be the, the driving point of this whole thing. Any further comment?
Yeah, what, what, what type of material your houses gonna be, uh, veneer? What type of veneer are gonna be on these houses?
We, the only thing I was gonna say from our workshop, they said they would build 96 homes a year, just to give you some kind of estimate of how many homes per year.
And they were $400, so correct. Start with the first phase?
Yes, sir.
What type of veneer your houses gonna have?
It'll be, it'll be a mix of veneer right now, is what we're planning. So we are planning some vinyl, but we're also planning some vinyl with some brick, some vinyl with some stone, some hardy with some stones, some all hardy. It just depends on kind of what the buyer is really wanting. That's what we're kind of leaning towards here. So, um? And just, just for real quick clarification, kind of talking out loud here, but I did, I tried to speak with Mr. Long about, about the impacted fees, the development fees. So we have them all put together, and I'll, I'll send them over to Mr. Hester this week.
Thank you, sir.
So there's no plan, you, you don't have a picture of the houses, of your houses yet, do you?
Uh, we have some that we can provide to you, for sure.
That's Canadian. I was looking for them. I didn't see them. What page are they on, Karen?
Oh, it'd be good if you can get us one of these, like the ones, like they got. They must know how they look. If you can get us one of them, that'd be a big help.
Yeah, definitely. I'll, I'll print that out and provide that for everyone next time.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, 'cause I think it's important too that we, um, you know, kind of see what these houses look like. I can't say that, you know, I'm in favor of how some of the previous, the earlier developments, how the houses look. Um, those are people's houses, so I'm not, you know, me personally.
Thank you, sir.
Um, so I'm, I'm, I just want to see what they?
Okay, definitely. Yeah.
What they look like. Um, you, you, and this is the first reading, but, okay. But could you have those?
We will have those for, before the second reading.
Please, thank you.
All right, any more discussion?
So the, um, previous, the, the previous, um, development that this council just voted on, the lot size was a minimum of 7,000 square feet and 60 feet width. What's, what's your minimums?
We have 50-foot wide and 60-foot wide, 60-foot wide lots. The minimum square foot, lot size, square footage right now is 6,000.
So I, I was just listening to Mr. Agie earlier, um, talk about his concerns about ingress and ingress for, for emergency equipment. And so these lots are actually smaller and, and closer together. And so, you know, I think as Mr. Hester works through this development agreement, that we need to make sure our, our roads are, are adequate. That's, that's a big concern.
Do you have any specs on your road size?
Um, we're gonna be, we're planning using the, the spec that was provided to us by your staff. And the one, one, couple of things I'd like to mention about wider roads is, obviously, it's a larger maintenance cost to the HOA, so it's gonna be higher fees for the, for the property owners. It's gonna be, or, you know, more likely for issues. But the biggest thing, I think, is, is wider roads actually promote speeding. Empirical data has proven that. So one of the things you'll actually see a lot of these other cities doing is narrowing the roads and restricting parking on the roads. So our HOA covenants restricts the parking on these roads. Just, uh, Mr. Levis said, we have, you know, three spaces, one in the garage, two on the driveway required. So, um, we don't, and what ends up happening is you widen these road, and then you add these speed bumps that end up slowing down the emergency service vehicles. And that's what, what we've typically seen. I mean, we've, you know, back in, uh, 10 years ago, it seemed like everyone was going wider and wider. And then they're making us with speed bumps everywhere, and emergency services was having challenges with that. Um, and then one thing that we also have the issue of is, is we, we perceive it to look not as attractive when it gets really wide. It starts looking like an, an airport runway when you're, when you get real wide, so.
So there are no, there, there'll be no parking on your, in your neighborhood on the roads?
It will be, yeah, it'll be HOA maintained to, to limit parking.
Is it limited or is it none?
It, it is, is limited to the appropriate areas to ensure proper fire access, emergency vehicle access.
Who, who enforce that rule?
That'll be the HOA. So it'll be the, um, usually it's run by a management company. Management company will help enforce it with the, um, the community, the HOA board members uh, voting and, and choosing how to run it.
You gotta make sure, you gotta make sure, now, these kids gonna be walking to, walking to school, right? So you gonna have to make it safe for them to walk to school. You got to.
There'll be sidewalk, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. There's sidewalk on both sides of the road.
Uh, I, I, I will say this. Um, kind of like Mr. Wilson right here being with the consistency. Now, I'm voting, well, I'm voting requir, well, required to make a vote on this first reading on your development, but I don't even have a clue of what the houses are gonna look like. So, I mean, I'm just saying now, we're gonna need, I'm gonna need see what these houses look like before I, before I make a, on, by second reading, because
Yep.
we gotta know what we, it's just consistency.
I agree.
We're voting in the blind, and we don't know exactly what, what, what you're building. We just know you got development here with some colors and, and a plan, but we don't know what the house looks like.
Mr. Guy, that's the reason I told him we need to come up with something like this so we can see what you doing, so the council can make their decision. You got to have something like this.
Yes.
Please, sir.
That's, um, what's your plan for the, um, one more question for you. What's your plan for middle schoolers who, of course, the schools are walkable for elementary and high school? What about middle school?
So, um, that will probably be bus. Um, we're still trying to figure out that with the school system. If the bus is gonna take them from the middle school or high school, I think that'd be my proposal. We're still trying to figure that out with the school system now. It is in our TIA to do a traffic light study at that intersection of the middle school, though. It sounds like there's been a lot of traffic there. So we are looking at, trying to make that, that improvement a little bit better.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get some new schools and improve the schools so everybody can go to the school and they can learn better, because that's the first thing people do when they move into your town. They look at your education.
Yes, sir.
And we got to have that. We get them new schools and get these people going to school, we'll be all right. But just get us the information we need. We need this.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote? Okay, moving along to D. First reading of CCMA 22-20, D.R. Horton Incorporated requests map number 135-00-00-020-000 on Laxter Highway to be rezoned from Limited Industrial District ID2 to Plan Development District PD. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve.
I move we oppose the planning commission on the first reading of CCMA 22-20 with the addition of a reverter clause and a suitable plan developer's agreement negotiated by Mr. Hester.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Moseley. All right, any discussion, comments? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote? Okay, on the E, first reading of CCMA 22-21, D.R. Horton Incorporated requests map number 135-00-00-032-000 on Laxter Highway to be rezoned from Limited Industrial District ID2 to Plan Development District PD. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. Need a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion that we approve first reading of CCMA 22-21.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Moseley.
Can we add the, the, um, rever?
Oh, uh.
We need to add the rever.
With, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, adding, adding the, uh, reverter clause, um, to this, uh, reading.
And development agreement.
And development agreement of 5,000.
Thank you, Mr. F.
Did you vote to your second that?
Yes, second.
You seconded that too, okay. All right, uh, any, uh, discussion or comments? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, first reading of CCMA 22-22, D.R. Horton Incorporated requests 9.45 acres of tax map number 136-00-00-042-000 on Laxter Highway to be rezoned from Redist, from Redistrict Industrial District ID1 to Plan Development District PD. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve.
I move that we approve the first reading of CCMA 22-22 with a reverter clause and an acceptable, um, developer's agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kiyah. Any comments or discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, on the new business. Rural Fire is requesting to transfer remaining grant match funds in the amount of $42,824.12 uh, 12 cents dollars to purchase rechargeable batteries for self-contained breathing air packs within the county. Ms. Megan Brewer.
Good evening. Um, the grant match, the, the grant period for this fiscal year is over. Um, you guys, every year, we put aside $5,000 to match the departments in the county. Since that period's over, we have the balance and have had very good reviews about other fire departments within the county and surrounding to use rechargeable batteries. Right now, I have two quotes. The batteries themselves are $425 each, and the chargers are $795 each roughly. It sounds like a lot, but they will last forever. And right now, I'm probably ordering, and, and I'm being generous saying 400 because it's probably more, about $400 worth of C batteries on a semi-monthly basis.
Will, will this be distributed out to each fire department or?
Yep, yep. It will be distributed among the 11 county fire departments. Yep. Um, I believe Richburg already uses them, and after talking to their chief and their captain, um, he can't, the captain can't say enough about it, so.
This for Chester, too? The city of Chester?
Uh, no, sir. This is just for, uh, the county fire departments. This is a grant match.
Mr. Kiyah, this, this is exactly, they went to Rural Fire. It was on the agenda last month, last meeting. They did not go to the Rural Fire Commission. They went to the Rural Fire Commission. They approved it. Richburg has 22 air packs. Richburg has bought all these rechargeable batteries. I think we need seven. Richburg also had a bunch of new air packs through grants that have a thermal imaging camera. So you need the batteries to do that.
Okay.
City of Chester has bought all this stuff, and they're not gonna get a dime of this $42,000. Am I right?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, this grant match funds are specifically for county fire departments.
The Rural Fire.
Rural Fire.
Chester, this comes back to what I've been saying a long time. The city pays county taxes.
Yep.
Just like I do.
Pay both of them.
And they're not gonna get any of this money in the Rural Fire, out of Rural Fire, back to the city in their fire district. Now, as I understand it, there may be a truck that Chester has never gotten before, or it's been many, many years. They may be gonna get a truck, but I don't know that they've decided that yet.
It's, it's not maybe. The Rural Fire Commission at the last meeting voted to give the Richburg Fire Department, the Chester Fire District, a pumper, and I want to say Ross the, uh, Chester Fire District, a pumper. And I wanna say Rossville, I can't remember off the top of my head. But they did vote. So the Chester Fire District will be getting a brand-new pumper from the seven that we're ordering.
But now what they did on that, Mr. Killian, the chief at Chester had no input. The chief at Richburg had no input.
That was gonna be my question.
What we need to do to change this?
Your Rural Fire Board has no representation from the city of Chester.
Uh, yes, sir, they do. Yes, sir, they do. J P McNeil.
Well, he, he, he's not representing in the capacity of, cause he's actually, was appointed by me, J P McNeil. So he's not representing in the capacity of, uh, the, uh, city fire district. He's representing in capacity of a citizen in that district.
Correct.
So my question is, I know, and he's, he's not, uh, one of the higher-ranking people. My question is to everybody, so Richburg Fire and Chester don't have, they don't have a, a higher-ranking representative that sits on y'all's board?
Okay, so I, I, I can't pretend to tell, yeah, no, I can't pretend to tell you how the intricacies of the Rural Fire Board. But they are, it's a representative from the community. It does not necessarily have to be a firefighter. But the chiefs do regularly come before us.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they have the opportunity. It's an open public meeting, just like county council meetings. They can come and speak at any time as long as they sign up.
Well, well, how, how, how do they, how did y'all determine if it's Rural Fire? I'm, I'm just, to my ignorance, I'm trying to learn.
No, it's fine.
How do y'all, how did y'all come up with giving the city district a new pumper?
Mm-hmm.
When they're actually not part of the Rural Fire?
Um, so that is a question for the Rural Fire Commission. Um, as far as a role there, I do not. Um, they tell me.
Mr. Guy, if you, if, if I may just interrupt for a minute, so, Mr. Agee, I know you'll correct me if I say something that's not right with the guard of fire.
Probably should say that.
But, uh, so you got eleven different, and I'm, just a quick rundown on this. You had eleven different fire departments. Alright, you got five different districts, correct? Mr., four different districts?
Well, five, if you got the city.
So five different districts. Chester City is a district. Chester Si-, and I'm just learning this, Mr. Guy, so I'm just kinda wrapping my head around it too. But Chester City is the only one that is fully funded by its own district taxing. Now, with that said, they do make requests to us annually in our budget. Um, and Mr. Darby, they're, they're the lowest request, I believe, that we get the majority of the time. Is that correct? But, but we are able to fund them. Um, and I'm, I believe that'll come evident in the workshop as well. But you have a Rural Fire District or Rural Fire Board? You have, each of these districts have their own fire board. I believe there's five districts with separate fire boards.
Correct.
There's volunteer boards on top of that. And then there's a Chiefs Association, too, on top of that. So is the collaboration and all in there fully? I'm not sure. Uh, but with regard to these trucks, I believe they were ordered over a year ago, roughly, and so.
Just right at the, um, right at the beginning of the fiscal year, Tommy, right? Yeah, July one of last year.
And so while, I, I think there were, I have heard the discussion that s-, these trucks were ordered to spec and not specific to, uh, stations and then allocated to stations without input as well. But I'm not sure how Rural Fire made those decisions.
Okay, so what, what, and I know we as a county and city need what we need, but what, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is, and I'm not trying to take anything from the city or add anything to the city, but I'm trying to understand this. If the Rural Fire has their own board and the city is fully funded, right? Cause it that the Rural Fire is giving the city a truck. I'm trying to understand this.
Uh, so I.
Let me, let me explain it. I'll just cut to the chase. Years ago, the city went to the legislature and asked them to create the Chester Fire District, the Three Mile Fire District. The state House of, the state legislature created the Chester Fire District. It's, it's totally independent. They paid the city of Chester an administrative fee to manage, to funding these things for the Chester Fire District. In the ordinance that created that, it says that the Chester Fire District cannot be taxed for any other fire protection. So let's fast forward. They created the Chester Rule, Chester County Rural Fire Board back in fifty-eight or fifty-nine, somewhere in that neighborhood. And when they created that, the city of Chester could not be taxed for any money to fund Rural Fire. So the county supervisor in those days took the money out of the, out of the general fund that you and Mr. Killian pay taxes into and funds Rural Fire. Rich Park, Lando, in nineteen ninety, created the Lando Rural Fire District. A special purpose district created by this council, not by the state legislature. They had a tax millage of about twenty-six mills that they put on their district. They never did that. They never funded it all the way to do that. So at any rate, they had about eleven mills. They had Schumacher. The lines were drawn, blah, 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 and all this. So then Richburg came along in nineteen ninety-five, or somewhere like that, and said they wanted to have a tax district. Paul Shaw was gonna do it through the legislature, just like Chester. Mr. Roddy decided, no, we'll create it by the county council, and then he got voted out of office. I don't know if Mr. Brownham was still on the air at, at that point in time or not. So then they had the, the Chester County Council required Richburg to have a voter, have a referendum. Lando actually had a referendum too. It was a non-bonding referendum. The citizens in Lando and the citizens in Richburg voted to impose a tax on themselves to fund the needs of the Rural Fire Service and this, that and the other. So now we fast forward, uh, I think Carlisle did it for Lewis. They created a tax district for Lewis. Just Canadaia, they created a tax district for, for loan. All those tax districts are in the Louisville School Service area. Every one of them. Lowry's declined to do it. West Chester declined to do it. Black Falls declined to do it. South Chester declined to do it. All the rest of them didn't wanna do that. So these districts were created, these four districts out there were created in that Louisville School Service area. Coming back to city, city as part of that reorganization is supposed to get a little bit of money. And every month, Mr. Darby writes a check to the Chester County, uh, out of the Rural Fire Service money and gives it to the city, uh, the Chester Fire District, am I correct? Have I said anything wrong? So here again, Chester gets some money. Chester citizens, you and Mr. Killian in particular, and Mr. Brownham, I think he lives in the tax district.
Oh, yeah.
He pays taxes to Chester County and that money is taken out of the general budget and given to Rural Fire for loan. So it's only right that Chester should get something. And for years, they haven't gotten anything in the amount that it is.
So that's, so that's how we get to the pumper truck?
The last.
That's how you get to the pumper truck?
Yeah, the last, uh, yeah, the, the last, and I can't really call it a vehicle.
But, but here's, here's the problem with what happened. Mr. Hester's employee is a firefighter with the city of Chester. He's also the chairman of the Rural Fire Commission. I don't believe that's exactly a caution.
Alright, let's, uh, that, 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 that really, all that's good information and, uh, and with that, maybe for another time, we should do it after the meeting. But Mr. Agee is very well-versed on that. So we're getting back to this, uh, matching fund deal here. Let's, I think we got off, and then we'll run down a rapid trail there. So let's, let's get back to that. And I know Ms. Brewer probably has other things she'd like to be doing, so we get all that, so.
Yeah, so I mean, my goal is to, uh, the goal is to get at least one charger and six batteries, which, um, each air pack takes six batteries for each fire, physical fire station. Um, it's obviously gonna depend, sometimes when we work with our vendors, they'll give us like a bulk discount cause we're gonna be spending a little bit of money with them, so.
Alright. I have one question on it. What was that, uh, in, uh, my memory doesn't serve me well. What type of grant did y'all get that you have forty-two thousand dollars?
It's not a grant. Um, every year, a line item is put into the budget so that each of the eleven fire departments has an opportunity to get a five thousand dollar grant match from the county. Um, specifically, it's usually for the forestry grant and i- it's there. So when, at the end of the year, we had this, yeah, we had this balance. We had, we didn't have this money this year as applied last year, so.
Okay, alright. Can I ask Mr. Darby, is, is that true? I'm not doubting your word, but I mean, the money is controlled by Mr. Darby, right?
He gave me all of the information before I came up here. Yes, sir.
What she said was accurate. Um, we budgeted fifty-five thousand, um, for the eleven departments, five thousand each. Uh, the forty-two thousand and some change is what's left over from that fifty-five thousand. I believe March first was the deadline to apply with forestry. Um, so those monies, uh, will go unspent, if not reallocated for another purpose.
Do we have any questions or comments, uh, concerning that question? Here none? I need a motion to approve that?
Yeah, yeah, we need a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. We need a, a motion of the second, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, so I was gonna, uh, move that we approve the, uh, request from Rural Fire to, um, transfer the remaining grant match funds in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and twelve cents to purchase rechargeable batteries for self-contained breathing air packs within the county.
A second.
Second by Ms. Moseley. Alrighty, any, any more discussion on that particular subject now? Here, here none? So all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, uh, approval of a bid for R F P two-two-two-three-dash-zero-nine generator installation, Richburg Fire Substation to K and K Electrical Services out of, uh, Chester, South Carolina in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, using one cent sales tax money. Ms. Susan Coak.
I'm here.
Okay.
Um, this'll be short and sweet. Um, you said pretty much everything that there is to be said. Um, the low bidder did not bid on the proper equipment. They bid on a, um, residential unit instead of commercial, so we are going with the second lowest bid, which there was only two bids. So we would like to, um, award it to K and K Electrical Services.
Alright, any questions or comments? I need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion we approve the bid, R F P tw- two-two-two-three-dash-zero-nine.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moseley. Alright, now we'll get to, uh, questions.
Mr. Hester, what, do you know anything about this bid? Were you involved in this at all?
Were, uh, was I involved in the bid? I wasn't involved in the bid, but Ms., but Ms. Coak went over it with me prior to coming in here. We talked about the, uh, the fact that people that, the other bids were for residential. That, that's my only knowledge of it.
So the other question to be to Mr. Darby is that, uh, we do have the twenty-six thousand, okay? That's, that's what we really need to know.
Yes, they have about, it's, uh, one cent sales tax.
One cent sales tax, right?
Yes.
Is it within the budget of the one cent sales tax?
Yes, we have about eighty-nine thousand dollars.
So it was in that?
Yes, sir.
Eighty-nine thousand, it was approved. This is gonna do that. The other, the other project is gonna be approved within that eighty-nine thousand.
We are working on the second project. It's going out for bid tomorrow.
Okay, alright. All in favor of, uh, bid, of accepting the bid from K and K Electric, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Thank you, Ms. Coak. Okay, first reading of, uh, C C M A two-three-dash-zero-four. Robert L. Reed the third requests, uh, Taps Mac number, uh, one-two-three-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-zero-eight-eight-dash-zero-zero-zero at thirty-four fifty-eight, Hernandez Road, Richburg, South Carolina, twenty-nine-seventh, uh, two-nine, to, uh, be rezoned from Limited Commercial L C to General Commercial District, uh, G C. Planning Commission voted seven to zero to approve. Need a motion on that?
I'll, I'll move that we approve our shooting of C C M A twenty-three-dash-o-four.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Killian. Discussion or comments?
Is that, is, is that Robert, is that the, Robin, is that the land down on Hernandez?
No, it's, um, it's where Rob Reed has his equipment, his business. He has his farm equipment business on the corner, not on the Winchester corner.
Oh, it's, it's on the.
It's the other, so it's the corner of nine-one and Hernandez Road. So I can tell you more if you want.
No, I don't.
Alright, any, any further comments or questions? Here none? We got a mo-, first, uh, motion and a second on this. Uh, all in favor of approving, uh, C C M A twenty-three-dash-zero-four, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I didn't ask the question, but is there a public hearing on this?
That's at the Planning Commission.
That's at the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
You vote in favor?
Yep.
Okay, unanimous vote to approve. Okay, uh, D, the first reading of, uh, C C M eight, uh, two-three-dash-zero-five. Allison and Gerald Timmons request tax map, uh, one-six-six-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-four-dash-zero-one-six-dash-zero-zero-zero at, uh, nine-seventy-five Jackson Road, Fort, uh, Fort Long, South Carolina, twenty-nine-seven-fourteen, to be rezoned from Rule One District R one to Rule, uh, Two District R two. Planning Commission voted seven to zero to approve.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, uh, uh, any comments or questions? Here none? All in favor of, uh, this being the first reading of C C M eight-two-two, uh, two-three-dash-zero-five? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote? Uh, discuss installing streetlights on Meadow Brook Road. Uh, Counting Killian.
What I need to do to try to get that light up, what I need to go through, Ms. Winters, to try to get that light up? It's a pole already out there. And I don't think you, you just put a light on it, cause they've been calling me about it. About two or three people done got killed out there. So what I need to do to try to get that light up?
So it, there's already an existing light. It's just one that needs to be put back up?
It's a pole, it's a pole already up out there. All you gotta do is just put a light on it. Please, ma'am.
Is it in the city?
No, in the county of Meadow Brook.
Okay. I'm not, I don't know where Meadow Brook is.
Right off of Pinkman.
Right in front of it.
Oh, okay.
Right off Pinkman, like it goes into seventy-two.
Okay, so, so we're not installing new lights. We're just putting.
Putting up a light.
An existing light?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But it would be a cost probably of what? Thirty bucks a month?
Well, we're just putting it back up, right?
There's no light. There's just a pole.
It's just a pole.
Put a light on it. How far down that road is the light?
Right there, you know where the McLennan's, where that shop used to be? And where my daddy lived at, it's right in there. It's real, dawg. That's where that guy got killed at, right there.
So you know that council changed the ordinance as far as street lighting? And so that, that would be up to this council if y'all were to do that, so.
You know, the, the last lighting project that we approved was, uh, all in the one cent sales tax.
The equipment was.
Equipment and everything, so.
Not the light bill?
I know that, not having that situation is, but, uh.
There was a light before, right?
I'll be very happy if this council.
Yeah.
Help me out to get that light up.
How would you think that that light would stop that, those type of incidents from going on out there?
Me, it's.
Uh, Sheriff?
Yeah.
Can we talk to you for a second?
Let me ask a quick question. There was a light there before, correct? And it's just gone. It just needs to be replaced?
Just need to put a light up right there.
There's, there's a pole there.
Normally those lights are, is it right out of residents out there?
No, it's right on the center here, right there on the street.
I mean, most of the time, like I say, a resident would put that up and, uh, pay for that light. So, uh, Meadow Brook Road, there was a murder, death, homicide, whatever you wanna call it.
And that dog.
I, I, I actually know the guy who was murdered. They, not a troublemaking guy at all. And I think with Mr. Killian is. And I think what Mr. Killian is wanting the council to do is put a light in the area, can you give us a little bit of? Help us visualize the area, do you remember what that area was and, uh, how, uh, and I know y- y- you probably want lights everywhere in the county if you could get them? But, uh, could you elaborate if this will?
It's where that kid got killed at there, she was walking, it was two of them, and one got killed right there.
Yes, sir, um. Yeah, lighting is an additional, um, element that would prevent, or help reduce crime. You know, just off the top of my head, I, I can't tell you really exactly where we could place it, but.
It's a pole right there, in that little dog spot where that guy got killed at, you know, he was walking on the bus, setting somebody shot him.
Yes, sir, and I, I remember that, that spot, I just, as far as, uh, where, where to place that, I don't know, you know, we'd have to speak with Duke Power. Um, yeah, I, I've just noticed here in the past year where the lighting has improved Dawson Drive.
Yes.
You know, a- along that area from Center Road, on and around to Old York. And, uh, that, that lighting has improved that area. I don't know who did that, I don't know if the city did that.
The city counts.
But, uh, that's good, you know, ultimately, uh, crime hides in, crime plays in darkness. And, uh, you know, this is something that we talked to, to this council about a lot, um, in communities like the Eureka, um, where those homes are abandoned and crime, uh, the criminal element is attracted to those areas. And, and so I feel like certainly if we could find ways to light things up, uh, that, that would help, certainly that's not gonna, uh, prohibit it from happening entirely, but that would help. Um, that's just one of the many elements that we need, uh, around our county.
To help the sheriff out too, we need to try to get some cameras and stuff put up like we talked about.
Yes, sir.
Back when we, before, we need to get some up, 'cause you can solve a whole lot of crime, if people had cameras up and you'll see who, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, and, and, um.
And I know you need to-
That's, that's been a long process, too long, if you ask me, we've had some obstacles, but we're, we're moving forward and we anticipate that project to be fully operational very soon.
Um, actually, to think about it, um. My family, we actually own some property on the next street over, and there was a murder right there in the front yard of that, so that area. That area on Kelsey Street, the next street over, we, we owned some property on that street.
Yeah, this, this past summer, and, uh, in the front yard of our property, somebody was, was murdered, so, um, that is, I guess that is becoming an area where you, uh.
How many, how many, do we have, uh, the county, I'm pretty sure they got, we got streetlights we pay for, right?
Yes, we do.
That's a Tommy Darby question.
But like, like I say, the, uh, the last one that I can recall where we did it was the, the Main Street Black Durham Road and Black Stock, we have about, uh, Mr. Wilson, I think.
I remember that being discussed up here.
Yeah, that, that's the only, those are the only ones that I'm aware of, the ones that, uh, Mr. Branham had referenced.
How much we normally pay for them?
It's very minimal, um, off the top of my head, maybe five, six hundred dollars a, a year.
Well, I'm gonna jump on board with Mr. Killian, if we can do, whatever we can do, if it's a minimal cost, or whatever we can do to deter crime and, and the s- the city limits of Chester and on the outline areas of Chester, if it's a minimal cost, I'm jumping right on board with him. I think if, uh, if we can put a light up in that area at a minimal cost, I'm, I'm on board with you with that.
Thank you, sir. Could, could we get Mr. Hester to get some dollar figures and do some research?
Uh, I was, if you, if you, maybe I can offer a resolution, give me, if I can kind of narrow down a specific, uh, spot, and it may be that the sheriff knows, um, the specific spot. Um, off of Meadowbrook Road, I'll have, uh, Public Works go out to see if there's a pole that a light's supposed to be on, if there's electricity on that pole and what, what's going on. Maybe it's just a matter of we pu- purchase a light, get it back up there, maybe it's something that Duke Power already had up there to begin with, so let me, let me get Public Works to look into it. And, uh, but either way, I'll come back to council, uh, at the next meeting, if that's suitable. Is that too long? That's suitable?
Yeah.
That'll be okay.
There's also about three or four different luminaires of lights that puts out the light, so you may need more to check out what type of luminaire you would have, and each one of them, the higher the luminaire, the higher the price it's gonna be. Do you know the cross street?
Mm-hmm. I, I wanted to ask too, uh, if, while you're doing that, Brian, if you could, excuse me, Mr. Hester, if you could see if there's any other maybe poles that are there that maybe, if it's that minimal a cost for that much more safety for that area, I mean, if there's more poles or anything else that we might could do to improve that and add more lighting, I'm, I'm prepared to move forward with that as well, if you could kind of check that out and maybe help everybody out in that area.
Me and Cory, we know in our district, it's a lot of shooting going on.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot of people getting killed, and we gotta do something about it.
Light it up than-
We got to, we got to do something.
Let it be, okay.
All right, if I can just get, Sheriff, can you help me locate the exact area, maybe, uh, tomorrow we can talk about it? Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, okay, so. Well, this is just discussion, isn't it?
Well.
Go for the light.
Unless, uh.
Do we need a motion or anything?
Unless it's just for information only, that, but Mr. Hester's gonna come back with a, uh, recommendation or whatever, is that right, Mr. Hester?
I think, I think just information only, a request by Mr. Killian for, for us to look into it, we'll look into it, come back May fifteenth with the recommendation.
Okay.
That'll be fine.
We'll just use that information then, with that directive to you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, sounds good. All right, uh, moving on to F there, well, information, uh, stuff taken, uh, brought in by the CCTC be- uh, meeting earlier this, uh, afternoon. Uh, when you told on number one, accentation regarding road and signed reimbursement of twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars for road material, uh, to the road department. Need a motion and a second.
I make a motion, we approve the reimbursement of twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and one cent.
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. All right, end of discussion. Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Uh, action taken regarding bid for RFP twenty-two-dash-fifty-four Chester County On Call Maintenance Project Faulkner Development and Engineering LLC in the amount of, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And a motion and a second. That was said.
I make a motion, we approve the bid, RFB twenty-two-dash-fifty-four, uh, Chester County On Call Maintenance Project Faulkner Development and Engineering.
All right, and a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Killian, end of discussion, comments? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. All right, boards and commission, the appointment of-
Number three.
Huh?
Number three.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I just overlooked that, that, uh, accentation regarding the recommendation to change the CTC accounting process.
I make a motion, we, uh, change the accounting process as recommended in the, about the CTC.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vaughn? Any questions or comments? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to boards and commission. The appointment of, uh, the Catawba Mental Health Board, uh, county council, which is, uh, on page one ninety-eight. What, uh, in the, who was that that, uh, I saw there was a lady's name?
Ms. Bowman. Virginia Bowman.
Virginia Bowman.
Virginia Bowman.
Mm-hmm.
This fills the seat, I believe, of Dr. Stone resigned, is that correct, uh, Ms., Ms. Clerk? All right.
I motion, we appoint Virginia Bowman to the Catawba Community Mental Health Center Board.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, end of discussion? There's motion and a second, is that?
Yeah, good, Mr. Killian.
Oh, okay, he did, okay.
He did.
Killian did, okay, I'm sorry. All right, end of discussion? Hear no discussion, all in favor of, of appointing Miss Virginia Bowman to the Catawba Mental Health Board, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, moving on to executive session, we would need to go into executive session to receive legal advice regarding Project Twenty-two eighty, to receive legal advice regarding footprint and electric glass, uh, to receive legal advice regarding contractual matter in the H.R. Department, and to receive legal advice regarding the contractual matter in the excesses department. Uh, need a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Okay.
Second.
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 Second, by Mr. Killian, all in favor of going to executive session, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.